Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Welcome. This is our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from the citizens, and there is time for public comment. Prior to any action items on the agenda, we ask that speakers identify themselves in their own district. If you don't know that, we can help you with that. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes. More about equity while speakers ensure a meeting is reasonable and lengthy. Tomorrow's the first day of school. You know? Well, some of us.
I see two smiles over there.
Mr. Portman smiles.
Yes.
If you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes. Your temple is excited as well. I saw.
Yes.
If you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. Moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time elapses. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting's adjournment. Thank you for coming. As far as the adoption of the agenda, we need to add a line item between 2.4 and 2.5 to provide opportunity for the school board liaison, school liaison to work with. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda with that change?
To move.
There are motions. Mr. Grove, second?
Second.
Second is... All good, right? All right, so... We added 2.4... Oh, I'm sorry. It's her turn.
2.4.
Sorry, Macy. I... Let's get it. Sorry. Cool. All right.
All right, so on June 25th, 26th, and 27th, Dalton Renter and I were able to attend the National Academy of Future Physicians and Medical Leaders at the University of Massachusetts, where we heard young, brilliant minds speak about their creations and Nobel Prize winners about their findings. And thanks to the Emily Hillshire Scholarship, Dalton Renter was able to go for free, and he was able to spend the night there. I got a discount because I'm actually an alumna of the academy, and I actually plan to go to it next year. And I also received the Emily Hillshire Scholarship but for a different program. I went to like three different camps this year. So this one was a biomedical camp at the Lebanon Valley College in Pennsylvania, where I was able to learn from different professors from the college and do dissections and different experiments and learn about the different areas of the medical field and science areas. And I know band camp took place here for two weeks, July 30th through August 3rd and August 6th through August 10th. And I believe that football camp was also around the same time. Okay, whenever I did band, it was around the same time. So, okay. Eighth grade orientation was on the 9th of this month. Online courses such as Work for Virginia started yesterday. Yesterday was Meet the Teacher. Tomorrow is the first day of school, like we all know. And the football scrimmage is this Friday. And I actually have a project proposal that I would like to propose. I actually haven't cleared it. Mr. Swin there, I wanted to ask him about it, but...
It's for him.
Yeah, there you go.
No pressure.
But I would like to raise money for... There's these things called glucose gel, and it's for someone who's diabetic, and they go low in class, and the teacher has this like little glucose gel, and they can put it in their mouths if they like faint from a low blood sugar. So hopefully it would raise their blood sugar until like a nurse could get there or someone else. So that is my project proposal. I've been thinking about it for a little while now, so hopefully I can get a role on that. Thank you. That's all I have for you guys today.
Any questions for Macy? Any questions? Thanks, Macy. And good luck on your project, even if it doesn't start this Friday. I'm sure our principal will close the loop with you. All right, donations.
I have one donation to report. Maggie Rogers from Central Coffee Roasters donated $50 on football.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from our July 10 meeting?
Sure.
Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Ms. Meyer.
Ms. Meyer, I keep wanting to call you by your first name, but it's not going to work. I should turn all the name tags around so that I can see...
I get you know who you are.
Been a long day for me. All right, all in favor, aye? Aye, opposed, no? It's ordered. Mr. Grove, you had opportunity to verify bills?
I did. Did well, and everything's fine. We did have a question about a late charge, but I think we've got that fixed.
I appreciate you doing that. When do you have time to fit that in?
I do it online, so I can do it at 2:00 in the morning. It doesn't matter.
Oh, that's great.
If I may, you'll see that since July, we have two expenditure reports for FY '18. FY '19 is the first year we've been able to blend them like that. It actually just hasn't seen what we've done.
I was going to mention that, but I didn't. Forgot. I looked at the late charge. That bothered me. We got that fixed. And that's the reason, because we went to two bill pays. And so now we don't have any late charges, because we can hit those before they come due.
So that's a result of us not having this fiscal brick wall that we get every year, right? That has caused so much consternation, and I think it's not good stewardship of the public's funds so that we're able to manage our FY '18, '19 funds at the same time as other campuses.
Probably most.
Most. Great. Well, thanks for that. All right, the consent agenda has on it acceptance of donations, the payment of bills, and a report on homeschool students. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Clear.
Ms. Meyer, second. All in favor, aye? Aye, let's go. It's ordered. Reports to superintendent.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. We have quite a few reports of the superintendent, although I'm not really making many of these reports. 4.1 is the RCPS logo options. We have some logos to show you, and we'd like to ask for approval for one of them. So I'll ask Polly Jenkins to come up, our PR personnel, and also wellness integration specialist, for committee meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so this evening, we're going to go through and first take a look at what our current logo is. So go ahead with the first slide. So I ask everyone, what is our logo here for Rappahannock County Public Schools? The one that you see on the screen right now, this is the one that we use for the school board office. This is found on our letterhead, on our envelopes, business cards, memos, anything that comes directly from the school board office, you'll see this nice Apple logo. We also have this logo, which is the county seal, which is on our district homepage for our website. We have this logo here, the Panther Head, and this one is used mostly on RCES as well as RCHS websites as well. We have this one. This is used on the RCHS athletic page. We have the RC logo, which is also used by the athletic program. And the Panther Head, which is used in athletics as well. And there's a few different variations of our Panther Head, but this is one of the common ones. So here's all the logos up on the screen for you to take a look at. These are ones that we are currently using. So my question is, what's the logo? So let's talk a little bit about branding and why it's important for a school. A logo really is an identifiable representation of the school system for when parents or students or teachers or community members are looking at anything that we put out in the community. That logo is what identifies us. It's also a reflection of the school, both the elementary school as well as the high school and the entire school division. So here are a few examples of local schools' logos. Just threw them up there, just so you can see kind of what others, our neighboring schools are currently using. So what makes a good logo? There's a few key things that are mentioned here. First of all, a logo is generally simplistic. It's something that's easily recognizable when you see it. It's scalable, which means whether it's on a small business card or on a large t-shirt, it looks good in either format. It's memorable, impactful. Certainly, when someone sees the logo, you want them to remember that and to associate it with the school system. A good logo is also timeless, something that we select now, we want to be appropriate 10 years from now as well. Also should be versatile, whether it is something that is perhaps professional in nature like a press release. You want it to be appropriate for that, as well as something that a student might be proud to wear on a t-shirt. It should also be relevant or appropriate. We might not want to have a dagger for our logo. So you want to make sure that it is appropriate to the school system. And lastly, very importantly, it should be consistent. With a logo, you want to make sure that that same logo is represented across the board on everything that comes out from the school division. All right, so let's move ahead to challenges, because a logo for a school system is a little unique. It has to represent three separate entities in our case: the elementary school, the high school, and of course, the whole division at large. So you want it to be somewhat representative of all three, but still stand alone on its own. But unity is a huge theme with a logo for a school division. A lot of schools that are much larger than us, and most are much larger than us, they have one logo that they keep consistently that represents the whole school division. But then they have a mascot which represents each individual school. So if you look at a school page, you'll see the district logo showing the unity, but then they also have the mascot for that particular school to show, of course, their independence as a school. And here you have just a few examples within Fairfax County. There's a lot more schools than that, but just a few of the mascots that they use. So on the website, they have the Fairfax County Public Schools logo that you see on the left, and then they have whichever mascot they are also on their homepage. So let's go to logo ideas.
Oh, my God. You never know when things come back.
We like it. Yeah, so we're going to talk about a few ideas for our logo.
Let's not go with that one.
In Mr. Mills' defense, this was taken at a school event where it was a country western theme, hence the overalls and the flannel shirt, but it's a great look.
This part may be terrific.
So we are going to go over a few logo ideas, and that was not really one of them, but it's always open for discussion.
It's fun.
All right, so this is the first logo option. This particular one, you see the RCPS. I'll have Dr. Grumsley move forward to the next slide. Here you see, it is the same consistent logo, but it is adapted to the particular school. So at the top, you see Rappahannock County Public Schools; on the bottom left, the elementary; bottom right, the high school. The advantage with this particular option, it is very simplistic. It's very clean. There are abstract mountains, which do represent our scenic landscape that we have here in the county. And each mountain represents one of the schools. So the two schools are therefore unified in the mountain range. And regardless of which one is used, it's unmistakable that it is representative of RCPS family. So that is option one. Option two. And there you see RCPS with the two other options, RCES bottom left, RCHS bottom right. Now, you'll notice with these two, elementary is a dominant gold, high school's dominant blue, with RCPS being a blend of the two showing unity. The symbol there does represent a journey, starting with pre-K or kindergarten all the way up through graduation. It's also designed to really draw your eye in to specifically whether it's ES, HS, or PS also, so you could quickly identify it that way as well. But again, our theme here is unity between the two schools. All right, so our final option for this evening, option three, and I wanted to present this one in a slightly different format, starting with the elementary school. With this one, the tree symbolizes growth. You know, we get the children young, they're like little seedlings that grow up into strong, strong trees. But it also represents the natural beauties within the county. It's also visually appealing to younger students. So let's move on to the high school. With this one, the mountains are symbolic, representing climbing to the top, while again reflecting our county and the beautiful landscape that we have here. This image is also visually strong, which is more appealing to the older students. So let's look at RCPS. With this one, it's a blend of the two, again showing that unity coming together, the tree, the mountain, both representing the beautiful landscape, but again showing unity between the school division. So to the next slide. Again, it's a side-by-side comparison of the three different options. Option one, of course, on the left, the second in the middle, and then the last on the far right. So these are just options, certainly. We could stick with something that we have currently that I showed earlier, or if there's something else you'd like to see. But we did test this within the school board office and did get some good responses, and we would like to have it as an action for you to review later, to see what you would like to possibly select. My biggest recommendation, though, is whether we go with a logo we currently have or if we go with a new logo, that we do have a unified logo that we use on everything.
Branding is important.
Very important. And once we do it, we like to keep it consistent for a long time.
Hopefully, we haven't ordered 10,000 tubes of old logo paper.
We switched to electronic...
That happened once before.
So we print it as we go, just in case, because there are so many. Okay, what office am I writing from today?
Is there... Can I have a question? Is there... With the option three, are there any colors with these, or are they just...
There is an option to put color on it, just from a design aspect. I kept it gray just because it is more detailed, and I really wanted the eye to go towards the wording and not so much in the detail, but if you wanted to see it in color, that is something I could easily do.
I like color.
I... Well, I'll tell you right off the front. I like three. And I like, I would like, it would be kind of cool to have it in some little color somewhere. Just my personal.
Like blue mountains, maybe in gold tree or something.
Something, I don't know. Yeah.
And if you don't mind me after this slipping out, I could even bring it back within 15 minutes to show you color version.
Is that good?
Go for it. Unless we're not...
That long, I know.
...to make a decision.
Well, and that's up to you. We held it as an action item on the agenda. Should you care to adopt and say, "Go for it," or if you want us to solicit more feedback, put it out there, we can do whatever you want there. It's just from branding at the beginning of the year, it's a timely point.
It's a good time to do it.
To do one, and then we can print it off. We can always change it later if it's not well received, but Polly's done a lot of soliciting and feedback from stakeholders on what they wanted to see, unified logo as part of it and bringing the others.
See, one and two have color, and they pop out at you.
They do. You need color in that.
Three with some color would be really pretty cool. Even the same color that you have in one for three.
Are you interested in perhaps having color in the letters, or are you looking specifically at the tree and the mountain?
I think in the diagram.
I think in the...
In the graphic.
Blue mountains, gold trees. Kind of something you might like.
Okay.
We live in the...
Does everybody like three?
I like three. It's inviting.
Yep. I like three better, but I'm just curious whether we're going to send you off with sort of different shades with different colors. I mean, my thought almost is, when we get to the point where we're ready, I saw it on the agenda as an act night, and while we can send you off in that direction, whether we need to decide gold and... I guess what I would rather do is just say, "We like option three, could you give us some color?"
Mm-hmm.
Right? And that might be sufficient for our task at this table. It's part of branding, you know. I mean, if you want to go and then it's so we can see that it's gray, I wouldn't rather get that to an artist than me. But I like the third option too. I think all of us do.
I don't mind going and giving you an example. I'm a visual learner myself, so if anyone else says, I know that that's helpful.
And the response you got from other people that you've spoken to so far is which one? You're not going to tell us?
I'll be honest, I have had a... Everyone that I've talked to has said they liked them all, but there has been a lot of folks that also liked option one in addition to option three. Option two, not as much.
Because the color in option one sticks out. So if you can take the positive from that and put it in three, you could have a winner, right?
There you go.
Yeah, I'd be very happy to go ahead and do that, and then come back in later. I'll have that available for you.
Yes, that's great.
Yeah, we get on to you.
Now, I will say that the Division spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on branding and... And she can do all of this. She designs these things. I mean, she's incredible.
Are you serious?
And it's part of her salary and her job. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You're a sibling. My screen pulls back up here. All right. Our next item is very exciting. This is our facilities update. So I'm going to ask Executive Director of Administrative Services, Dr. Bolt, and the principals will also update the board on some summer capital and facilities projects that we've been very, very busy working on this summer. And I know Scott Schlosser is also here to talk about some projects that Building Trades was able to cover too, so we're very excited. All right, Dr. Bolt.
First off, being the boys did a lot this summer, and I think I need to recognize everyone that was involved. We got a lot done. Scott helped out a lot. I hired his son to paint. Jimmy and Ben were very helpful, and especially the custodians, Jeff Scroggins and Bobby, and I don't even know Bobby's last name.
Boblin.
Boblin. Without those guys, none of this would have happened. So I was sort of the ringleader and fussed with the vendors, and these guys helped everything happen. So our main focus was HVAC. So if you look at the list, I'm not going to go through everything, because you've seen this list before. It's on our capital improvement plan, but we've gotten everything fixed that was broken. So everything is covered 100% now under our comprehensive plan. That's big, because that is a cost savings. And I was able to negotiate with different vendors to give different prices. I didn't use Honeywell for everything, because they didn't come with the best price. So I went with the best price of the people that I thought could do the best job. The big ticket items, go ahead, go down. Go on down to the next one, is the cooling tower at the elementary school. It was so cool watching these guys with this crane do these massive, you know, and they're welding and they're doing all their stuff, and it took them three solid days to get it in. They got it in, it's working. We've also signed an agreement with Southern Air, who is going to do our water treatment on that cooling tower and on our geothermal and our boiler heaters, so that we are actually doing preventative maintenance. And it's reasonable, it's in the budget, so I feel pretty good about all that, to be able to maintain it. The high school, the fresh air has not worked for years. Previous vendor we were working with said it had to be replaced. We were able to fix it and get it working. So there's actually fresh air. Replaced the compressors at the... Remember how hot it was at graduation? It is very cold in there now. And both units went out. One was covered under comprehensive, the other we paid for. So I went ahead and paid for our part and got that fixed, and then they're in the process of doing the other, replacing the other compressors. Nurse's office never had AC. We now have AC in there. And for both schools, we are doing a control system for our HVAC. So I don't know if you're aware, at the primary, you can only do, prior, you could only do heat or air. You couldn't switch. I mean, they had to physically come in and do pipes. Now we have a control system that if we need, and the problem is cold in the mornings, we can turn on heat and switch to AC in the afternoon. So, and that's going to work for our boiler system, our pneumatics. Right now, they run wide open. They just are wide open. I mean, the thermostats put there, so now we can control them, so it should be a cost savings for us. And this, the auditorium, it's a huge unit they put up there to replace the broken unit in the auditorium. So we're really in pretty good shape in HVAC, and everything's covered. So the only thing that we have to cover is if a pipe burst or something, because they can't do preventative maintenance on pipes. But the units themselves are all covered. All right, water treatment. The vein of my existence this year was water. So we did the panel, we did boosters, we redid the sensors in the holding tank. So it is all up to date and up to speed, and it's under warranty. So fingers crossed, we've alleviated those problems. We had a new roof put on the wrestling room, the damage from that windstorm that came through. We're going to get that done this summer. The portico, we did a... This is design on a dime. This is how I rolled this summer, design on a dime. This portico cost $350 to redo. So I bought the materials and hired someone to come in and do it. We worked out a deal. So we've just made it much more appealing when you walk in and just dressed it up a little bit. The red at the elementary, the primary wing, was so faded and terrible, so we repainted all the red, just to update. The high school, under each thing, there's like drywall, and it was crumbling down, so it was repaired, repainted all the way around the whole school, all the entrances. The caulking, we tried to do preventative maintenance, so wherever concrete or asphalt was hitting the building, there was a gap, and it had been caulked. We caulked the whole, the whole district is recaulked, to keep that water from running down in there. And this is the pride right here, the new classrooms. We were able to do one classroom at elementary school and one at the high school. So what we did was we replaced the flooring, painted the rooms, did an accent wall color, painted the heat registers. If the one classroom needed all the ceiling tiles, and that makes such a difference, just the basic ceiling tiles, new furniture. So these are the model classrooms for our capital improvement, that next year we'll be doing more classrooms. And I think the teachers are pretty excited to see what is coming, because right now we have a hodgepodge of so many different things in the classrooms. And so we're going to be uniform, and I tried to overkill, because you know, teachers like cabinets. So I got two huge metal cabinets, two bookshelves, a teacher's desk chair, new desk for the kids. So I think that was a positive. So far, I've heard good things from teachers. This is going down, when you walk into elementary school and you make a right down by that sixth and seventh grade hallway, if you look at that ceiling tile, all that was rusted, because the exhaust fans weren't working. The exhaust fans, I got repaired, and in the summer, I was able, actually hired Scott and his son to do it, to replace the metal grids, and then we replaced all the tiles around that whole wing that needed it. And when you walk through the hallway, it just amazes me what a difference it makes. 500 yards of mulch to the playground. That is four tractor trailers full of mulch. mulch with that little bob, I mean, he was like a kid in a candy store, and he was very appreciative that he didn't have to use that tractor, because it's so, you know, tractors, that bobcat, I did get in it and try it myself, and it's like a video game. Nothing goes so quick. So he was able to spread it, and we actually have quite a bit mulch left to fill in throughout the year. We put it out back behind the aux gym, so that when things, you know, water washes some away, so we have a little extra that we can fill in as needed.
Did you cover it?
Excuse me?
Did you cover it?
The mulch? No, he's still using it.
No, the wood you have left over.
If you cover the mulch, wouldn't that keep the moisture in it? They don't cover it at the yards.
Well, maybe not.
So, I mean, that's, I was concerned about the moisture.
Except wood fiber.
It's on gravel, not asphalt, so that it can't drain. The welding room was repainted. I don't know if you all have been in the welding room, that thing is huge. And so we repainted that, all the office, the little, the office, the bathroom, all the little areas is completely repainted. Mr. Hogan was a gym, he cleared it all out before he left, and so we were able to come in and spray that. So that's, and we were also able to re-tile the floor in his room, because some of the tiles were coming up, and then the bathroom in there that the teachers use. We got some new signs, a new school board office sign, then we took the sign that was there and put it around in front of the bus shop for when people are coming. We got a new sign, do not enter the bus loop. And we actually have another sign that's, you know that wooden sign that's out in front of the school board office? There's a sign there that I'm actually getting Mr. Schlosser's class, when I come back to work on.
With our logo?
That's, well, no, I did it without the logo, but I told Holly, I said, as soon as they okay the logo, I want it, because I want to do a sign for beside the door with our logo on it, and I want to put it on our email, where it says Gmail, we can put a logo there. So I'm waiting for your guys' decision for that. I also put security film, had a security film that you can't break through on the, on the front of porticos, and like where the slatters are, and the front doors of both schools. And then when you go to that primary, that long wall of windows there, you know, I tried to think of what, because it's expensive, but would be the most effective place to do it, and that long wall, there's kids walking down there all the time. So you can actually, you can shoot through it, and a bullet will go through, but it will not shatter. And I watched demonstrations of it, and it took about, a big guy beating it with a sledgehammer, it took about four or five minutes to break it. So right, we're looking for time for one of our deputies to get to where the problem is. So I think that's money we'll spend. And now, this is Mr. Temple's. Come on, Mr. Temple, I had more fun with this project than anything.
All right, so thanks to Ms. Robin and finding some money, we were able to actually build a teachers lounge for our teachers. If you remember, the back of the cafeteria was open, and that became pretty much just kind of a storage, things were just kind of stuffed back there, boxes and books, and we cleared it out, and I talked to Robin about the possibility of closing it in and actually making it a nice space for our teachers. So we've completely remodeled it, and mailboxes are now down there, so teachers can actually check their mail, sit down, have a cup of coffee, have lunch in a space where they can meet together as a team and not in a classroom. So it's got a table that will seat ten, it's got two lounge chairs with footstools, we've got the refrigerator down there and the drink machines, we've got a water cooler for the teachers, and AC's going to be installed in the next week or so in that room. Teachers are excited to have a space now where they can kind of sit. Coffee bar, there's a coffee bar as well, yes. So teachers are very excited to have a space, they've already been using it and sitting in there and chatting and doing some planning where they're not in a classroom. And we also did a little bit of remodeling in the front office, we changed the ceiling tiles, re-tiled the flooring, carpeted the back section where our secretaries sit, and if you notice behind...
Ben carpeted, Ben and Ashley carpeted.
We did, we laid the carpet squares, yes, in all the offices in the building. And if you notice where they're sitting, they have nicer shelving behind their desks. Before, they had a big unit that was just very difficult to use, it was so deep, they couldn't even get into it in the back, so we had that removed. Gave them some space that just makes the office a little bit more inviting. Moving the mailboxes gave us a little bit more seating to make our lobby a little bit more inviting for parents when they come visit.
Okay, can I make one comment? And I did this at the cafeteria, out of everything that was done, this makes me the happiest. If you see the pins on the desk.
Yeah, the plugs.
So what was there before were, it was cute, it was a flower pot, but they had pins with plastic spoons taped to them.
Yeah.
So I thought, we can do better than that. So this, they can't run off with the pins, and it just looks clean and nice.
Redoes the whole HVAC and the whole building.
No, this makes me so happy. It looks so nice in there, it just looks professional.
It's a first impression.
It is. What they see when they first walk to the, walk in the doors, what they're going to remember.
And then the year.
It looks really high.
It is really high, they might remember that, but you know, it's all cool everywhere now.
And we also opened a transition room this year, which we talked about in the spring as one of our goals. We took a classroom that was already halfway split, and we took half of it to make a sensory lab for our special needs students, and then we took the other half and made it a transition room. They have a refrigerator, they have a sink, they have a stove where they can go in and with the help of the transition teacher, learn how to do some cooking. They also will be, have access to a washing dryer that's in one of the custodial closets, and they're going to be washing the towels and blankets for the preschool class once a week and folding. Our transition students will also be delivering our mail and placing in the teachers' boxes, since our mailboxes have now moved, they'll come once a day and collect the mail from the office and go down and stuff mailboxes. So they're going to learn some skills, and they're, the teachers are very excited about this room. Although we've set it up for our special needs population, any class can come in and use the kitchen area if they wanted to do a project. So it's available to anyone.
I'm asking my, as I call them, my dream team to come up here. Yeah, come on, Jason. I know you all know this, Jason Giura, Michelle Papa, and Scott Schlosser are all serving as administrative assistants this year. We've now had about a week and a half under our belts working together, and it has been a phenomenal experience for me so far. Hopefully, they'll say the same thing. I want to say, first of all, thank you to Dr. Grimsley and to Dr. Bolt and to the board. All of those improvements that you just saw that Robin showed, many of them were at the high school. We are extremely grateful for those. Those are things that, you know, that they're, they're just phenomenal. And by having those done by Robin, it kind of freed us up to do some things a little bit more creative, and a lot of which you're about to see, really, they're improvements, but they have as much to do with improving school climate as they do with improving the facilities themselves. That, what you see there, there are two of 12 pictures, those are pictures that Danny Pond had made up using grant money, I think. This is, this is the peer mentor, this is from the Peer Mentor Program. They're, they're poster size, and we've got them displayed above the lockers in the main hallway and in this eighth grade hallway, and we, Scott hung them up for me, and we did them in such a way that we've got plenty of room to add more in the future, which is what we intend to do. But I think it, it kind of dawned on me that really this one eighth grade hallway especially was just bare, and that's, that's one of the things. Then the next slide, Dr. Chee. The hallway quotes, one of the things, Michelle Papa and I went to a Renaissance event, a school Renaissance event back in the spring, and we were both taken with it immediately, and a lot of what we saw, again, little things, just slogans and sayings that you put up on your wall throughout your building. Those are some of them that you've seen, hopefully you've seen them as you've walked in. Commit to be Fit, they took over, they're taking over one of the bulletin boards on the gym hallway, and we had an intern do their logo in the correct colors above that bulletin board. Most of those that you see, Ms. Papa and I did that one on the left and the one on the right, and all of the others were done by students. And there are more than those, and again, there will be more coming. We're, we're very excited about that. I got a lot of nice looks last night when parents were here, they definitely noticed them. And again, plenty of room for more. And the other thing that's pretty neat about that, teachers have gotten this bug as well, and we've probably got a half a dozen or more teachers that said, can I put a quote up on my wall? And we're like, what color paint would you like? And so, by, by the way, Michelle Papa has got, if you ever need paint, every color under the rainbow and then some. Next slide.
Rainbow and iron fronts.
In addition to, after you walk into the building and you see this gorgeous portico that Robin helped us get, if you look up, as soon as you walk in the front door, that's what you will see. Again, this is the beginning of what we hope to be a lot of ceiling tiles that will be spread throughout our school, ceiling tiles designed by our school clubs, by our pride clubs, by our student organizations. And another example of teamwork makes the dream work, Scott Schlosser did some research that I never would have even thought of in a million years plus one, without being asked, without asking if it was a problem. He checked out to make sure that painting the ceiling tiles didn't violate any fire codes, didn't, you know, and it was, I would have never thought of that, ever. We also learned that ceiling tiles have warranties, we're still not really sure what they're warranted for. And, but anyway, so we want, you know, we want to make sure, so that, you know, the ones that we do in the future, if we need to coat them with fire retardant, we want to make sure that we do it in a way that's not harmful to the kids, and also, we don't want to put something up that our fire marshal is going to make us take down. But again, those two were done by students, they're right as you walk in the door, and you're going to see more of those in the year to come. Next slide. The faculty bathrooms, again, this kind of has credit for this, it's got to go to Robin Bolt. The one on the left is the faculty bathroom down at the end of the hallway, the main hallway by the boys' room, and the one on the right, if you could have seen that, that one on the right is in Rich Hogan's classroom. And if you could have seen that bathroom three years ago, you would, you would swear they were not the same place. Am I right? I mean, it's amazing. And what I didn't realize was that a lot of our faculty on this end of the building, that's the bathroom that they use, and so it's, it's a lot nicer now. And again, thank you, Dr. Bolt. More highlights, some decals, we, Michelle and I put up a few decals here and there on the windows, Dream Big, kind people are our kind of people, over the guidance office, over the administration office, over the main entrance, right there, that's the, that's the main entrance, Dream Big. Next one, and I got that idea, by the way, from Ben Temple. The conference room and the profile of a graduate room, the conference room is on the upper right, that was our ISS room, we have changed that to our conference room, the back half of it, we're using for much-needed storage space, and I was able to use props that our theater department had created that were just in the back of the stage, and we were going to buy dividers for the room, and I saw those one day, it's like, well, why don't we just use those? And I personally love them, hopefully the people in those meetings will as well. The profile of a graduate room on your left, that was classroom two, and that is now where we have our POG team, Profile of a Graduate, Jenny Capsum, Lisa Hyzer, and Kat Habee. There's a nice table in there where they can have conferences, where they can have student meetings, and I can tell you already, with just a week under our belts, that room has been heavily used, it's going to be a very valuable, because we really, you know, if, if you want to add a program, Profile of a Graduate is the program we're talking about, and you want it to be important, you want it to be used, well, then you've got to show that you value it. Last year, it was all kind of new, it came upon us, we had people kind of tucked into little corners here and there. Now they've got a great space, and the, and the kids and the parents will realize that we are taking this seriously. It's going to be a benefit to them. Next one, please. The entryways, and again, this goes back to what Robin had talked about earlier, what she had done. I particularly wanted to show that one, go ahead, that one there by the, that's the gym lobby entrance. I noticed it right away after they had finished, it's just so much cleaner than it used to be. And then on the left, that is a picture, it's, it's, it just looks like a great big piece of equipment, Scott Schlosser can tell you more about it, but it's a plasma cutter, right?
Computer-controlled plasma.
Computer-controlled plasma cutter that we got for the metal shop, that we were able to get through a grant. The gentleman that helped us write that grant, do you remember?
Doug Shapley.
Mike, yeah, right there, yes. He helped us write that grant, I couldn't remember your name, I'm sorry, Mike. And Mike Tupper was part of that, again, it was a team effort, we're thrilled to have that, and we're thrilled of what our kids are going to be able to do with that type of machinery. And what do we have next, if anything? Again, just the last thing, the places will go, the where are you going, that's going into the commons, and the, the kids wanted to do that one, it's just an open-ended, where are you going? You know, making people think. And then the big white circle that you see there, that is to come, it may come as soon as this week. We've got a fantastic quote that is going to go in there, that I have seen in other schools. I've got two students lined up who, matter of fact, I talked to one of them yesterday, they may start on it as soon as tomorrow. I'm just leaving it as a big white orb right now, because it's make, everyone's like, what's that going to be? What is that? It's like, oh, it's Full Moon. But it's, it's going to be really cool, I think it's going to be a great centerpiece. And I think, is that our last slide? I think, maybe, yeah? Yeah, well, and then if I can just, just related to all that, because again, many of our improvements were related to school climate, and I just want to give each of you one of these and explain to you, as part of helping to improve school climate, every high school student this summer got a postcard.
Oh, it was so good.
Every high school, I started off in June, and I thought to myself, I want to send a postcard to all of my seniors and tell them how much I'm looking forward to their senior leadership, and then when I got done, it was like, well, we don't have that many students. Now, it did take me all summer, I got the eighth graders, they also got mailed, literally the Monday before their orientation last week. And, but it's really, and some of the kids that I've talked to and the parents, I think it's made a great, it's just a good way to start the year off, and just as so many of these things are. So now it's up to us to carry through with that, but with this team, I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got enough paint.
One of the great things about Rappahannock County is that if you have an idea, it's okay to try it, and Building Trades Class is something that I've taught for 25 years here in Rappahannock, and a brainstorming session with Mr. Tupper and I created a second purpose for the Building Trades Class, and I have some pictures to kind of go along with that. So the class created a work order system, and the idea of the work order system of is if a teacher or a staff member had a request for an item, we would work with that individual and get those customer requirements and design features that we would need to create a real-life product. The ladder you see on the right, on the left, that's a Commit to be Fit item for balance, and on the right-hand side, you see several guitars stacked up, and guitar racks are really, really hard to purchase, those are something that are not readily available, so that's at the elementary school, and Tracy Dipper's classroom, she had an idea for guitar racks, and my class made it a reality. We did some installations as well, again, focusing on customer requirements. It wasn't just me talking to the teacher or the staff member about what needed to be done, try to get the class involved as well. A lot of our students go out and they start their own business, and it's important that they have those skills to talk to the public as well. There's a door closer on the left side for the cafeteria, and my construction class was the primary builder of the shed that you see, that's the ones out here in the parking lot for the band, and the Building Trades Class helped out in different parts of that as well, especially the garage door. Roll-up garage doors are not easy to install, so they're, they're very helpful in getting that done. We built ramps, we built signs, have the design then build, a lot of emphasis on design, not just kind of willy-nilly, we'll just throw it together and hopefully it looks good. It's the purpose behind why you build things the way you do. Lots of designs inside, you'll see them up and down the hallway, we'd like to add color to them, we talked about graphics a little while ago with the logo, same idea, color adds a lot of character and interest as well. Had an idea to hang students' work within the classroom, that's what you see, the clothesline on the left-hand side, it's got a little piece of rope that pulls out, goes across the classroom, and they're able to display classwork with that. Same classroom, they needed a place to put some speakers, so we made a speaker shelf, tucked them up underneath the desks so they're up and out of the way, yet at a level which they'd be functional. Okay, security was part of this as well, doors that swing outward are hard to barricade for drills, so we come up with a creative chain method. We work with props with the drama department. Mr. Nazar had a very sensitive scale that was donated to him, and he wanted a nice safe place for it, so it wouldn't get disturbed or broken or knocked off a table, so we made a blue box for it. These two pictures are in the auditorium, there were two lofts that did not meet regulations for fire codes, so my class removed the lofts, and then we were able to store all the chairs that were normally out here in the hallway, we were able to get them safely in a place where they could be stored inside the auditorium. be stored inside the auditorium. Okay, more installations on the left side, that's the boys' locker room. We installed shower dividers on the right-hand side, some cabinets that we put up. Some more organization ideas, that's in the weight room. There's the blue steps for step aerobics, and then the balls there on the rack, they look like they're super light, they're really quite heavy. Each one of them are like, you know, eight or 10 pounds. So there's a lot of weights sitting on that shelf. So sturdiness was important. Ms. Papa needed some ways to have some communication, so we have mailboxes my class made, we installed those. And the trophy case in the front had a little vandalism on it, a little graffiti on there. So we were able to remove the graffiti and try and match the color and stain, which is something that's an older item, like that's a real trick, and they did a nice job with that. We moved some large frame posters. We installed one and moved one at the same time. There's a little bit of weediness at the, the next picture, but we installed a short walkway. That area is out in the courtyard by the greenhouse, and it was prone to flooding, so students would walk through the, the mud and the muck on the way to getting to the shed. It was a big step. Of course, it's a slip hazard when your feet are covered with mud and water, so we put a walkway in, so the grass kind of took over over the summer. Sisterns were installed quite some time ago, and the pipes came apart, so we reinstalled, reconnected pipes. Simple installations from time to time, just installing an outlet strip on the side of a desk. We made a flag holder, installed the American flag, so we could clutch the flag in room 115. Repair of desks, the wooden items in a school, they, they do come apart. Students are the true test of furniture, I think, sometimes. So, yeah, they do, they do need some care once and again, and we installed many signs as well. Okay, and there were some other items too, I didn't get a chance to get a picture of. The work order system really worked nice in that I could work backwards to remember things that we did, so I could get pictures. But it's a good communication technique to work with students as well. It's not just building the item, it's working with the customer, it's coming up with a design, it's getting the material list and the procedure of how you go ahead and build things. So again, a big thank you for if you have an idea, it's okay if you try it. Gives students a sense of school pride as well when we do things like this.
And if I can just follow up to that program, the, the one thing that Scott did not mention, we, I don't know what the dollar value is we could assign to that, but I am quite confident that his class saved us thousands, if not tens of thousands of dollars, and also saved us time, because a lot of the things that his class ended up doing were things that we would have turned to Bobby to do. And by this class being able to do that, saving the money, saving time, allowing Bobby to get other things done, it's just a, it's not a win-win, it's like a win-win-win-win-win-win-win. I mean, it's really, we're going to continue it this year, we're very excited. It's a great program, and they really, the teachers love it, the kids love it, and Mr. Schlosser has done an outstanding job with it.
Any questions for the team?
We've got to figure out a way, you know, you did your, your, your work in ahead of time, then you have to write a bill.
We can bring that to you next meeting.
Actually, it's not, not bad, yeah. I mean, they are, they are doing the work to get the materials, the labor.
It should, I mean, I'm.
I don't know if you already got to do that.
It's part of the work, too.
Be good to get a bill, we want to pay, actually.
Yeah. Be a great way to.
For them to know a value of the contribution.
I was not being. Very good, great suggestion, thank you.
How do you prioritize their tasks? So to get these work orders in, what determines priority?
Safety's number one. If it's a safety issue, that has to come first. Sometimes it comes down to the materials on hand. Unfortunately, Lowe's, Home Depot are in our backyard, so that's sometimes a defining factor as well. And neat, that's another one. If they need it for a class activity, that, that's got to come first as well.
I think in the end, you were, you were able to field and fulfill every single request you got. I don't recall any.
And some of them were outdoor in nature, so if we had a lot of rain like we have right now, that, that changes our priority a little bit to doing something.
I'm amazed we got all, everything done this summer with all of the leather.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, that was just one thing on the agenda, right? That was just the facility.
That's the longest.
We got a lot of stuff done this summer.
Yes, we did. It was so much to cover. It was awesome, we're very excited. Of course, you'll remember that was made possible because we asked the supervisors, you know, it's hard to do these types of projects over the summer with a fixed budget, and you, it doesn't fit the timeline for your cost proposals and all those things you have to do. So they freed up our $150,000 and our debt service that we were just giving back to them anyway for us to request back to do, probably didn't make any sense. And then there was a $49,000 transfer that we were anticipating making, and we had actually put in the request, but the request was not needed at the time. So with that money, plus some of our end-of-year money, we were able to take care of all of that this summer, so we can start the school year without having to worry about trying to bundle those projects in. So we're very excited. Outstanding. Okay, next item on the agenda, 4.3, our accreditation scores are in. It is the crossover year, you can make it or break it on either the old system or the new system. We've been paying a lot of attention to the new system because it, well, quite frankly, scared us really bad when we looked at it last time because of the new factors that they're looking at school quality profiles for. I hit a little bit on this on my convocation this morning with the staff, but I did want to cover a few things here with you. All right, of course, our, our mission is, of course, to promote a culture of learning, grown back for excellence, and the passion and character that leads to each student's success. That's what we're always concentrating on. But we always have a measuring stick with which the state has to hold us accountable for that mission as well. So their new accreditation, accreditation standards now provide a more comprehensive view of school. It's no longer just your performance on those SOL tests, which was a big factor in graduation rates and things that we're accustomed to. But now there's increased emphasis on closing achievement gaps and some other factors we'll talk about in just a moment. There's only three accreditation ratings now. Before, you had all of these different, you know, accredited with conditions, a minor condition, and you have times to do that. There were a lot of stages. Now there's only three. So you're either accredited, you met all of them at, all your new indicators at level one or two, or you're accredited with conditions, meaning that you have one or more school quality indicators at level three, or you don't get accreditation instant night. So those are your, your steps, so a lot of concentration.
How many can you have with three?
We'll get to that. So here are your new accreditation standards at each school. So elementary and middle schools, we are, we're actually excited that they finally are calculating in growth measures at the elementary school, especially in some of our achievement gap areas, because sometimes we make great gains with a subgroup like special needs, but we don't get any credit for that in the state. They're still not at benchmark, but they came up 25%. That's awesome, but it's still not benchmarked. So now they do have a calculation that will measure growth for that, and they'll give you some credit for that in English and math. Then in elementary, overall science proficiency, your English achievement gaps among student groups, and those are your subgroups. Subgroups in math, absenteeism is the other biggie that we've been talking about for a couple of years now. High schools, overall proficiency, they're still not there with the growth thing yet. But English, math, science, you can, your English achievement gaps, math achievement gaps, graduation and completion, dropout rate, absenteeism, those are all the ones that count now. College and career civic readiness measure is coming, 2021. So we're not there yet. My inkling is they're probably going to use our college career readiness, workplace readiness assessment, or something similar to measure our progress on those. And we, we do really, really well on that every year. So I'm not too concerned about that. But we'll talk about the elephant in the room with the absenteeism measure, because that's the one that really scared us. New performance levels, really created with green, yellow, and red. Green, of course, you do it well, yellow, ooh, slow down, you're a little bit below standard. And then level three, red, below standard. Each of these has some kind of an action plan tied to it. So if you have one level three, you're in school improvement, and state's coming in doing academic reviews and telling you what you have to do. And we've been in that before, and I think 2010, 2011, so we've been in that before, and it's not a fun situation, because they really come in with some of these kind of universal rubrics and try to show you how to do everything, and it's, you know, it's, it's tough. Sometimes you get really great, helpful information. We did get some great information, but they have one size fits all for all the school divisions on some of those academic reviews, and they're, and no teachers, like the state coming in and telling them how they have to teach in their room either, that's not fun. So we like to avoid school improvement at all costs. But then the chronic absenteeism, this is where it gets dicey, withholding schools accountable for something we really don't have much control over. And what I mean by that is, schools with a current year, three-year overall absenteeism rate of no more than 15%, that means no more than 15% of your students have missed 10% of the year, excused or unexcused. The state does not differentiate between that, although state law does. So that's where there, it's diverging completely, and something we can't really have any punitive action for or do much about that, schools are being held accountable. So parents have every right to say, you know, my kid can't come today, he's got a cough, but maybe doesn't go to the doctor, so we don't need a doctor, and other things like that. Those add up to 10 absences across the whole year, you're chronically absent, and you get dinged by the state. It adds up very quickly. And in small schools, when we're in close quarters and things, we have a bad flu outbreak, it's done, we're done. So we wanted to look at, we ran a mock performance report on this old system on 2016, 17 data last year, just to see what, how we would measure up. We'd be in school improvement at both schools with this new system. So that's why we ran it last year, just to be sure we, okay, this is how it's going to look for us. We could actually perform much better on our standards of learning, and our kids are doing really well. We're one of the highest performing in the state, and we'll still be in school improvement.
What would they do? Would they come in and like drive kids to school?
That's my question.
There's nothing. It goes back. In my world, it goes back to what we were talking about earlier about climate. If school climate is good, kids are going to want to come. If they're a little bit sick, they're still going to want to come. And I think you're hitting the right target by targeting climate and positive approach as opposed to, you know, sending the truancy officers.
Well, and we did that last year, when we knew this was coming last year, the principals did really put in quite a few incentive programs, really tried to bring attention with parents to the attendance issue and why it's so important, and we need everybody to help us with this. And so we ran our, on the new system for this, last year's data, after we had done that, and we met it. So we actually did make an improvement there. Yes. So due to the incentives, we had Mr. Tupper in the truancy office helping us track down and really find out what was going on and making those connections with families, because there were quite a few, you know, family issues that were, were struggles for kids to get to school, and we were able to help with those. So that's what we're really trying to hone in on, is what supports can we offer our families to be sure that they can get to school on time? For a lot of our kids, it's the warm place, it's the two meals a day that they get, and, you know, it's a situation, we want everybody here. And the academic piece is just part of it.
On time does it matter though?
On time, yeah.
Being here is it.
Being here.
You can come in a little bit late.
Right, we'll work with you. I mean, first period teachers may have an issue with that statement, but.
I understand.
You know, we think all of it matters, and we, we're there to help. So we'll, another item on the agenda after this is about what we're doing this year to kind of bring it up one more notch, so we're making those connections with families. Because we have to. But it is an item of contention with a lot of our superintendents, and it's part of our rural coalition, our rural schools are taking it up as a huge issue, because we'll see a lot of our high-performing schools getting knocked out of our accreditation status because of something we can't control, and we don't agree with that.
And sometimes the kids, I mean, sometimes they're legitimately seriously ill, and 10 days is nothing.
My daughter in first grade missed 26 days because she caught everything. So I'd be on the list, sorry, I did.
Well, mono will knock you down for a long time.
Yeah, yep. So it happens, so that's. As you're advocating to your policy people and delegates, they might want to look at chronic absenteeism as a school quality indicator for accreditation, because we don't agree with it, we don't like it. It diverges from the law that says we can do anything about it, so we, you know, just an issue to be aware of, but we're still doing okay, so we find a way.
Even mine, my granddaughter, when she was in sixth grade, asked me about this topic. She said, so if I'm sick, and she worked this, she's in sixth grade, she worked this out, she said, if I'm sick and I come this tour, and I make my friends sick. She said, am I making things better for us? Even a child in a circumstance is a problem.
Well, and the flu epidemic, you lose half the kids. I mean, if one fell through.
Nobody likes it.
Well, I mean, to some degree, you know, everybody likes it. Is there anything we can do about it as a board? Can we write a letter? Can we, as a board, communicate with other boards and Fauquier and so forth and so on? And as a group of boards, put something together to send to the state?
And that's something we're actually asking ourselves, our region four superintendents and key instructional leaders groups are looking to create a resolution to circulate to all the boards to say, can you please sign this so we can send it in? That'd be great.
Would it not be better for each board to have its own resolution?
You do, I mean, you adopt it, but.
A little bit, I mean, sometimes those things, if you have one and everybody signs it, it's just.
Well, you make it Rappahannock County, and you send it off, but it's the same wording so that when they lobby or advocate on the floor, you have more weight, and it's okay, these people agree with the same issue, so. We've done that with a few others before. So hopefully, this one will be looked at a little bit more closely, and I think they will when they see how many schools are actually dropping out of their accreditation status, because I don't think that's going to be very long.
And this is a state board.
Okay, to our scores, of course, we're performing really, really high. Last year, we outperformed the previous year. Three-year average still remains high, we're not worried about that, although we want to strive for better. We're looking for more pass-advanced scores, we're trying to get our reading at the elementary into the 90s. We have really high goals, we think we can do it, so that's what we're heading. So you see the absenteeism at the bottom for the elementary school, 31%. We would have been in a level three on improvement in that area. We were at 13% last year when we reported, so the incentives really did work. I know it worked for my first grader, she was very excited, and one day she was just really tired, had a little tummy ache, no, no fever or anything, like, well, you can stay home, it's okay if you're feeling, you haven't missed anything. No, Mr. Temple's got me on the perfect attendance list, so I better. It works for some kids, motivated her, so we're excited about that. Rappahannock High School, County High School, all their scores really, really high as well. Absenteeism cut down so much, and for a lot of those kids, some of the parents just weren't aware. When Mr. Tupper was calling them, they leave for work and expect their high schooler to get to school, or get on the bus, and, oh, stay home, you know? So trying to make those personal phone calls and make sure there was a plan in place to, to make sure they got to school. So that made a huge difference. They cut it down to 19 from 40. Yeah, so that's a part of it, but we have to keep our attention on it, so we're going to do more with that. Any questions about the new rating system and our performance? We made it, we're fully accredited on either system. It's our work, so.
I do think that making sure that nurses make that point about if someone comes with a fever or having vomiting that morning, it's really just, you're sick, you're right. a fever or having vomiting that morning, it's really just, you're sick, you're right. It really is making more absenteeism in the long run if someone comes and has had a fever, and I think that's one of the, that's one of the things that I think younger kids don't always understand, is like, "Oh, but I should go 'cause, 'cause I should be there," and making sure that the nurse is, and everybody, other teachers, everybody is saying, "You shouldn't go," because if that's when you're gonna get the, half the class instead of one kid.
Well, even the twenty-four hour rule doesn't always, because your contagious period is different, but then you'd be telling people to stay away for seven to ten days.
Yeah, yeah. There's some kind of rule in some, just that, you know, that kids are aware of. Mr. Temple won't be mad at you if you have a fever.
So if they come, turn around and get counted, and turn around and leave, that's okay.
Don't do that.
Technically, that's, 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 you're there.
Yeah, but that, there, how long is it gonna take them to figure that out?
I told you, I told you my story about perfect attendance.
Yeah.
And I did away with it that day. We never did it again for twenty, twenty-two years, we never did it again. A mother brought a sick kid to school because of perfect attendance, and I said, "We'll never do that again." And he was really...
That's a different school.
Gotta do something.
Wonder here.
Any questions about that? Well, we're gonna talk a little more about what we're doing this year with the attendance. I know.
Our own, I mean, the resolution's the right thing.
Yeah, I do think that advocacy, parents are gonna get mad, and that's, you know, as a parent, I'm not proud about it either, I mean, if my kid's sick, they're gonna stay home, not sending him to school sick. Uh, but we're big on that too, we don't want kids to go to school sick. Uh, but we do wanna find out if there's something really going on that's leading to the chronic absenteeism, that is a big problem academically and then for families too, so. Um, with that, I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Carol Johnson to come up to talk about our new tiered system that we're going to implement this year.
I want the parents to be mad at her and not do it.
Yeah, I'm standing here with a pile of rotten lemons trying to figure out how I'm gonna make some good lemonade. Okay, so as I said, um, how do you take the lemons that come to you from the powers that be and try to turn it into lemonade? So, um, the administrative team got together over the summer, we were talking about this new requirement for the attendance, we talked about the things that we've had in place to try to improve attendance over the course of the years. So the way we decided to approach this was, how can we support student attendance? How can we be a part of a solution to any issues that may come up with attendance? So with that being said, we sent a letter home to our school family that went home with our students yesterday in their, um, meet the teacher packages, and that is on the slide in front of you. Um, I'd like to, to kinda highlight some of the wording in this. The schools value the children's attendance, we want to support our students and our families, we want to give proactive strategies to help to improve student attendance, and we're offering a system of support to help students to be able to improve their attendance at school. So with that, um, we've talked about, um, our current school board policy, and that's also the same as Virginia code for attendance, which, um, doesn't give schools in the school board a whole lot to work with as far as promoting students' attendance. Our school board policy deals with unexcused student absences, and there are many absences that students have that the parents know about, and if the parents know about them and they're in excused absence, um, that doesn't give us any, um, ground to try to assist the student, um, in improving attendance, and therefore, our hands are kind of tied. So we want our students to be in school, we want to encourage them to be in school when they can, and so we came up with what we called a leveled attendance intervention system to try to help promote that for our students. So if you would go back to the lovely triangle slide. So our overarching goal with this was to try to, um, help students to avoid getting those ten absences that are gonna trigger the, um, the lack of accreditation from the state. So our goal is to avoid students hitting those ten absences. So in level one, which is the green area, students who have one or two absences will be contacted by a phone call from the school's office. Um, in the past, this has been an automated call, and I am pleased to announce that this will be a live person calling this year, because with the automated call, um, especially if it leaves a message at a house, um, there's concerns of whether the parents actually know that the child has not been in school. So that will be a live person making that call this year for one to two absences. For the blue area, we have two levels, a level two A and two B. Level two A being for if a student has three to five absences. If a student has three to five absences, they will be contacted by the student's teacher. This is not necessarily new, because we did have our teachers calling parents last year when children start, had missed at least three days of school, um, so that part will not be new, and we will request a doctor's note for the student if they've had three to five absences. If the absences...
What are you gonna do in high school?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
High school, what teacher in high school will call?
Oakley.
Oh, they would get all calls?
Yes.
Oh, all right, okay. Oh, okay, cool.
Um, if they continue and have six to seven absences, um, the parents and students will be asked to meet with the principal and with the attendance officer. Now, this part is starting to get a little bit, um, formal and making students and parents uncomfortable. Um, if a student has a doctor's note, if they bring that doctor's note in within the three to five absence framework, then they would go back into the level one, where they're back into the one or two absences. So they're, they're not like stuck to where they're gonna continuously keep moving up, um, further in the plan. So the doctor's note, obviously, children are going to be sick and we want to be cognizant of that fact, so the doctor's notes will be considered and students will continue to move forward. Um, so the, between the principal and the attendance officer, there will be an attempt made to try to find out, you know, how can we support the student if there is anything additional that the school can do. Um, with the level three, if a student has eight absences, then the parent and the student will be asked to meet with what we are calling the School Attendance Matters, or the SAM team. And this, this kind of grew out of some meetings that we had with, um, local, um, persons who worked with the Department of Juvenile Justice, and they approached us last school year, we were part of a group that was talking about ways that, um, could help, that we could help to divert students from ending up in the court system. Truancy is really the major way that any student in Rappahannock County Public Schools would end up in the court system, and we, we fortunately only have a few of those a year, but when they're asking us, "How can Department of Juvenile Justice support your schools?", we told them that truancy is really the major issue that lands our students in that, and so they were willing to work with us on a truancy prevention program, um, between the director of the, um, Court Services for the Falkir County area, and then the representative from Department of Juvenile Justice. So this team would get together to help to analyze why the student is absent, and then to seek out any additional resources that may be able to help that family or that student with the attendance issues. Um, it could be a, a matter of the student doesn't want to come to school, it could be a matter of hooking them up with some, um, different counselors within the area, um, just really trying to come up with some proactive strategies to support the family once they get to that level. Nine-plus absences, um, we had said would be referred to the Rappahannock County Public Schools disciplinary team for alternative education considerations. That's not quite as ominous as it sounds, um, a lot of times our disciplinary committee is gonna come together if a student has a serious discipline infraction. In this instance, the group would be called together to talk about, okay, attendance is continuing to be an issue, how can we help this child to be able to receive their education within the confines of what's happening with them at that point in time? It could be a, a situation where the student needs homebound instruction, they have a serious illness that's gonna continue for a period of time, hooking them up with, um, the person who can set up the homebound instruction so that they can ta, continue to be counted as receiving their education is just one of the strategies. So, um, this is, um, a template, and it works on paper. It doesn't necessarily work when the big flu comes out in the middle of the school year, and you know that you have lots of children who have gone through eight absences very quickly because they were down with the flu. Um, we're hoping that with the, um, the request for the doctor's notes, that we can avoid having students end up in the blue level and the orange level because of that. Um, so like I said, it works on paper. Um, one good thing I would like to bring up that could possibly assist us with this, um, last year when we had the public hearing, we had, um, I think one of our supervisors had mentioned the lack of counseling services that we have available in Rappahannock County, and we've made lots of efforts within the school division to make counseling services available to our students at no cost, um, especially if they hit a tough spot and can benefit from some short-term counseling. We have, um, a memorandum of understanding with the National Counseling Group in Culpeper to provide those services for our special education students and for our Title IV students. When I met with them this past year, I had asked about the possibility of, um, what can you do to help our community? And from that conversation, um, we were able to talk about National Counseling Group setting up possibly a satellite office, um, here in Rappahannock County that would be open to the community, um, starting two to three days a week. Um, it would be paid by the pe, the patients going in, it would be, um, part of their insurance, it could be Medicaid funded. Um, they, they have offered a draft of an MOU for our county to take a look at, and the only thing they're asking for us to come up with is a space. So we are hopeful that we'll be able to talk to, um, some of our board supervisors and make that a reality for Rappahannock County to bring some mental health services back into our area, which could also be a positive with a plan like this.
Where the board of supervisors have to go?
Well, it's for the community, so, um, finding a satellite space, um, where they may wanna, instead of, there's certain criteria you want to be discreet, things like that, so working together. Um, but we have all, and working with social services and different places, we have been begging for a day a month satellite location, so Carol's finally made some networking connections so we can get maybe two to three days a week, which is incredible for the community, so, um, we're really thrilled about that. Um, so we do plan on bringing that to the supervisors to talk about and the CPMT team, our community planning management team.
Do you put that on their agenda, or are you gonna talk about it?
At my standing meeting with Gary Curry, when I talk to him, that's when we, and that's next week, so.
Thank you. Questions? For the lemonade lady?
It sounds like it could be overwhelming if, you know, four teachers called when your kid's out for three days, the three to five absence range. Um, I, I don't know, I can really picture having a kid out for three days without, I do that a lot without getting to the doctor, not a lot, but not very much, my kids aren't usually that sick, but, but, um, it's a, it's a big thing to get, get to a doctor, so I might consider be, having some leniency on it.
And we know our parents and the situations as we meet, I know as part of a team, and Jimmy was on that team with us, we had some kids who wouldn't show up and parents who were responsible, so what we were all calling, that, those parents get those kids up, I'm sick, hear it from your teachers, get up, go to school, when we implemented that system, so it's, it's worked before.
And if it's people who are staying home, it's...
And we know who they are, we're such a small, we're, we're not going to hammer down on, you know, it's just gonna be, we have to follow a process to find out what's going on and being able to support our families, that's really what it's about, it's being proactive, it's a measuring stick, we can't do anything about that's there, we want people to know it's there, we don't think it's very fair, um, but here's a system we can implement to help provide supports if they're needed, and we wanna open up those lines of communication, but please ask us if you're having trouble with attendance and why, and there's some workarounds we can come up with.
I would just, I think we just like maybe add the word "may" receive phone calls from teachers for three to five, that could give flexibility, you know, just in terms of, if you're saying you're going to, and then, "Well, John didn't get a call because we think he's honest, and James got a call because he, you know..."
No, I mean all four, like in a grade level or something, but when you're in the elementary, you'll be homeroom, teacher will call.
Yeah, but I mean, either one, it just seems like having the, having a little bit of a flexible word in that, I think it says, "I will be contacted," and if you say "may be contacted," then it could just give that, then you can be following what you say you're following instead of doing what you're gonna do, which is to...
Or you can even say "a teacher." See, I, I think that, I, I agree with you, I think we might be pushing a little hard to have all four teachers make a phone call.
Well, that would be at the high school.
I know, but I understand that, but I'm not sure I would wanna hear from four teachers on one absentee.
Especially if you really have a sick kid, like, and you have another kid who, it's too much.
And it could be, I mean, you know, I, 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 that could be overkill.
Well, we did a lot of that last year, so we did it last year.
We had all four teachers call.
They wouldn't know necessarily know, because the way your periods go, your different grade levels, those teams don't need, so they know, "Okay, this is on my list, I'm calling this afternoon." You know, they may not know if the other teacher called, but just making a contact, so, um, we, we did implement that last year.
I think we did it in a "will" or a "may" kind of case, did you do it with every child? Or did you do it...
We implemented, I was told to teachers that they needed to call at that point, so...
They did it with every child who's actually three times got a call.
Well, I didn't check.
But...
That's what they, yeah, it's a lot of calls. Yeah.
I mean, that's, I don't know.
Yeah. There's a lot of attention on it.
That's it as well.
Yeah, and somebody could look at the absenteeism and decide who's gonna make the call for the first four, the next four, and the next four, and you do something of that nature.
Well, and a lot of times, it's not just because you're absent, we're coming out, "Hey, this is what we did in class today, we missed seeing you, here's the work you missed," and it was more of that approach, it wasn't a coming down on you for being absent, it was, "Hey, in science, you missed this, I just want you to know about that." And if they came, because a lot of parents will send a note, I do that too, "Can you just send all the work?", so the teachers are making a notification to me through email or they sent the note to the office, we know that. So those teachers aren't calling, and they know they've made contact somehow. Um, but yeah, we, we do that.
It's just a semantic thing to me, it's just, you can finesse it more if you have the option, that's all.
Mm-hmm, yes. But if you know that they're doing that for every child who's absent, I think if you, I mean, for me, it would say me finding out what the child need to do, so I would not object to all four teachers contacting. I mean, I think if you isolate it for one individual and don't do it for the others, then, then you have a problem, but as long as you do everybody the same, and it is a problem, and if the state doesn't change, we've got to do a little something anyway.
And it's proactive, not punitive, we're not being a punisher, we're really saying, "Here's what's missed." In high school, it's a huge issue because you're missing a block of time, um, and you do miss quite a bit of work pretty easily, so it does, um, we move us to contact the families and say, "Hey, this went on, this quiz on Thursday, you need to know this," so making that contact with families, and also letting the teachers make those calls and say, "You know, I care about you, I missed you today." That goes such a long way with a kid who's not so, had enough to come to school, so, um, again, with the climate, we're trying to turn it into something more positive than what it is.
And then each teacher knows what's wrong with the child. And if you get a flu, only one last winner, you got it for a week and you were sick, it'd be nice for every teacher to know. Unfortunately, the state doesn't consider that.
Thank you, we're sorry, it's not a fun topic. Um, and another not a fun topic, well, pretty interesting if you like it, policy updates are in your next batch of homework, so please take a look at all of those, um, you can see the, um, explanation of the updates, I think it's a lot of just, um, small things and changing some verbiage and things like it usually is, but please study those if you have any questions, we'll bring them up at the next meeting where we'll ask you to make action on those policy updates. A lot of fun reading the policy, Amy.
What a great school, mom.
Okay. Can I move on to four point six? All right, Head Start update. Um, so as you might know, um, it's been out there quite a bit, and just a little over a week, we received, um, notification from Skyline CAP, it's our organization in, um, it's an organization in Madison who's been coordinating and, um, receives the funding for our Head Start program, um, that we have a memorandum of understanding with every year. We help, um, that program through a joint application process where we're trying to do additional outreach, um, to reach more families and make sure we serve that underserved population of students. Um, Head Start serves three and four-year-olds with, uh, mostly in poverty, but some other needs too on their eligibility criteria, um, and our preschool class has a sliding scale as well, so we're always trying to fill those classes, Head Start gets filled first, then our pre-K based on the sliding scale, so we're trying to get the needy stint first. Um, and that was the way we, we designed it when we started as BPI, the Virginia Preschool Initiative Class, we received a little bit of funding for that in twenty thirteen, I believe was the year, um, it was only about twelve thousand dollars, but it did help fund some of the...
It got things started. It got something really good started.
I, I agree with you. Um, and we serve so many students, and we saw our kindergarten readiness just come up immensely, which kindergarten is... just come up immensely, which kindergarten is like the old third grade, the standards are very rigorous, they start really into academic realm pretty quickly, so if they're not ready when they enter the doors, it's pretty difficult. So that was the impetus for that, just a lot of data about kindergarten readiness and what kids needed to come to us. Those kids that came to us with pre-K experience were doing great, and that's what we noticed, that kids who had some type of preschool were doing great. So we needed to amp that up because there were so many kids who weren't receiving any type of preschool experience at all, I mean, and that's where we saw this deficit. So 2013, we started BPI, lost the funding the very next year, state just took it and reallocated it to more urban areas, we see that a lot in other federal programs, and Head Start, that's apparently what's happened this time. So they called us about a little over a week ago and said that they had some information from the feds that our numbers weren't stacking up for a full Head Start class to be served, and they were going to modify and pull Head Start out of Rappahannock completely to reallocate to other programs. And the timing could not have been worse, because at that point, it's a week before school, so our preschool class was already filled, and like I said, Head Start fills first, then we fill up, but it doesn't kind of go backwards unless we know. If we know there's an issue, sometimes in the joint application, we'll have the people at Skyline say, okay, I have three I'm waiting on, you know, can we hold a few spots in case that doesn't come through, they may come over slightly over the poverty line or whatever it is. So we communicate quite a bit, Fran Kreuzer in Pupils Services, she is communicating always with those applications and being sure that's open, so the timing was really bad, because all of our students by a week before school in our regular preschool enrolled, registered, ready to go, you can't tell those folks, sorry, I'm pulling you out now, because, but then you're leaving the neediest kids without preschool, so that's where we got really upset over the timing of this. So that's what happened. So at the first board of supervisors meeting, just a few days after we had gotten the call, I wanted to put it out there, because in true Rappahannock spirit, that's what you do, you put out the challenge, and then everybody comes to the table and says, I want to help you, and that's exactly kind of what's going on, so everybody showed a lot of concern, CCLC really quickly jumped right in and said, how can we help? Social Services hopped in, a bunch of citizens emailed, emailed me and said, hey, we're ready to help, just let us know, so I'm just overwhelmed by that response. Even the board of supervisors seemed very concerned, all five said, oh man, this is an issue, they're taking our funding and putting it elsewhere, can you continuously keep us updated and see what we can do? So we opened that door. At this point in time, we are working with CCLC to come up with a funding proposal because we do have quite a few kids left in limbo, some that would have been accepted to Head Start and some who are, maybe have been slightly over the poverty lines, if you look at their criteria, it's awfully low, it's the national poverty line, which is what they serve, that's their funding, so we can't argue with their federal funding formula, that's what they're...
Which are our approximate?
Our approximate number, we had, this right before, you even asked that, 27 students, 12 three-year-olds, 15 four-year-olds, 18 from Head Start, three that were, 18 assumed to be processing through the Head Start, three were already accepted, six we absorbed in that we knew would have been accepted, eight that were below the poverty line, one in a homeless situation, so in total, nine would have immediately qualified for Head Start, four were waitlisted that they probably would have taken, because they had several slots that they can take slightly over. And then two that were waitlisted by Head Start because they hadn't received their documents in, so they may or may not have, they assume that they would probably. So that would have put 13, right, so 15, a class of 15, which they can't take more than 16, so it sounds like we had the numbers to do it, but, you know, you never know given year can...
Year to year.
Year to year, it's a little different, so, but we've usually had it full.
So as we stand now, we have a full pre-K, up to what?
As of yesterday, 22, which 18 is the max that you usually want to have in a pre-K class, BPI, 16 is what Head Start recommends you have.
Do we need to talk about putting another age in, or split in that, or...
We're offering supports for Mrs. Montague who's teaching that class, she came in, she was one of the ones that said, please tell me what I can do, these babies need to be taken care of, I'll do whatever it takes, she's amazing, so, and her age the same way, we have a high school class that's doing Teachers for Tomorrow, they're going to come in and help, and we also have lots of volunteers who are ready and willing to lend a hand. So that part I'm not worried about, our preschool class, we're going to be okay, but the process of creating this funding proposal with CCLC is creating an alternative in the meantime while we're trying to get Head Start back. And when we get Head Start back, I'm not sure what that will look like, but I'm thinking...
We don't think we will.
Well, it might come through a different organization, because, you know, Skyline's not the only one that can do that, so that's what we're trying to work out.
For this year, you don't?
Not this year, this year, no. Next year, yes, maybe, but we don't know yet, but for this year...
I wouldn't put my eggs in that basket, I mean, you look at, unfortunately, you look at where we are in the financial sector, and my, I did some calculating, because I had, I had a lot of rainy days, and we can go out and make hay or anything, so, but we only have one school district that has a lower free rent use rate than we do in the whole, in all 18 counties surrounding us, with only one district that has a higher free rent use rate. So, and that's a good indicator of where the poverty line is.
Well, and you would think, but the poverty that they're using isn't the free rent use, lunch, it's the poverty line.
I know that, but that's still...
And census data show that we're actually higher than a lot of our surrounding counties in the K to 12 age group. In that age group specifically, we actually have a pretty high poverty rate, and I think it was 13%.
13%, that's what it was, yeah.
But it's higher than some of our surrounding counties, so I'm not sure that that's an accurate picture of that age group, so I think we have a fighting chance, we got the numbers to show that they're there, so we're going to try everything we can, but in the meantime, we need an alternative program to try to take care of this, and that's what the funding proposal will do, whether it's through grants or asking the board of supervisors directly to say, hey, this is what we can serve right now, these are the numbers we have.
Do we have space for another class?
Well, we have the room that they, or that we're going to be in, but if CCLC were to take it on, they have space too, so, and we can work out memorandums of understanding to help provide transportation like we've been doing, that's all seamless, we have those things in place, so, see where that goes, but of course, it's what the parents want to do too, we can always offer it, and if they say, nevermind, I don't want to, that's another if, we don't know until we send it out. So we've sent out letters, and we're sending out applications for information to see if they're interested, and hopefully, all this will come together for the next board of supervisors meeting, if we have something in place, those kids can start something at CCLC, you know, for the meantime.
This class doesn't start until after Labor Day?
After Labor Day, usually it wouldn't start till after Labor Day, exactly, so the timing would be pretty perfect, but we'll see what we can come up with, it's a lot of, playing in a lot of ifs, we don't know if it's gonna come through, we don't even know if the families are going to say yes to it, although we've had quite a few come to us and say, please, 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 what are you doing? Exactly, so it's just a matter of reaching and giving all that information in, but regardless of that, we'll have a funding proposal, here's our numbers, here's what we can do, here's what CCLC can do, and what the schools can do, and this is the best we've got right now. And then we'll keep trying to figure it out as we go along, but we had a week, so, we worked quite a lot in a week, but we continue. Any questions about that? It's a hot topic.
It's a hot topic. For the public. You feel what all you can do for something else?
Prefer the public to be aware of the level, and my concern is, you know, let's say that we raise awareness, and we get the money next year, and then the following year, they yank it back, and we, our school starts, and here we go again, and as soon as, that's no way we're not, as a community, if it's important to the community, if we don't come up with the plan, then...
I would prefer that, rather than have to rely on Head Start.
Then if money comes, then we pay ourselves.
Is there a way to get something, a good, like, just a good explanation in the paper this week? Is that possible?
Right there.
Actually, yes.
Maybe before, even if, I mean, if it's well done, I mean, to say, to get it done this week, that's ambitious, but if it could be at least before Labor Day, so people know...
Well, I don't think it's ambitious.
We've been in contact with them too, so we're trying to get it out there as much as we can, because it is an issue, we're worried, but we'll...
Well, for the record, you did a wonderful job on the Facebook side of it.
Yeah, well, that's fun.
Saw a lot of conversations there, it was helpful, everybody in his Facebook.
We have a great partner in CCLC, I just think it's wonderful to have in the community and everybody that's out there.
And they used to, how was CCLC, and they're the ones that actually brought it to this community in the first place, so getting that back involved in that arena is just super helpful and...
You can ask Headwaters to know, too.
That's what, once we know the number that we're asking for, then we'll pull it together and see where we can get to.
Thanks for speaking to that. It's a good first one.
All right, and the next one is a secret one, 4.7 is the Crisis Management Plan. Every year, the school board shall annually review the written school crisis emergency plan, this is something that is FOIA exempted through that code, that's on the slide, so that's for you to please review annually, record it in our minutes, it is a fluid document, we're always looking at it and always updating it as we need to, we're learning from our training, from our drills, what we need to update, so that's always moving, but we want to annually update you on which changes, so you'll see that on your executive side, there's not a whole lot I can say about it, because we don't want those plans getting out there, for a good reason, so...
But there is a plan.
There's lots of plans, we're learning them all, yes.
Great, thanks.
And that includes the superintendent updates.
All right, thank you, moving on to reports of the board's representatives, to the board's headwaters.
All right, the Headwaters did not have a July meeting because there was lack of a forum for July, and the Headwaters took the new teachers out to lunch, and they talked about the partnership with Headwaters, provided mission experiences for our students. They also held a back-to-school lunch for all faculty and staff and bus drivers, and then the case of Rappahannock is coming up in a month, or less, so people are scrambling for that, it's on September 8th at 5:30, and I saw an email soliciting volunteers, and I think tickets are still on sale, and it's a big fun bash, no matter what side you're on, I always volunteer and I love volunteering for it, it's good. And then, I had reported about strategic planning, an overview occurred in July, and I got in touch with school board members and talking to several about background information, and they were start interviewing everyone, stakeholders, including school board members, superintendent, teachers, parents, alumni, community leaders, beginning the first of the year, to try to come up with a more, my understanding is more, I guess, they're slowing the process down a little bit from what we reported, but I think it's gonna come up with a great, great thing to do, that's that.
And did you guess?
We did not.
All right, moving on, 6 dot Y is correspondence courses discussion. What was that?
Okay, so correspondence courses, do you want me to...
Yes, you go ahead, sure.
Okay.
I put it on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Grob emailed us to please put this on the agenda, he had received some correspondence, per correspondence courses, from a parent who was concerned about online summer courses through programs like Virtual Virginia and the transfer aid capability of the credits and how that impacts GPA, and with this question usually is, yeah, you can take it, but it doesn't really impact GPA, you transfer in, pass bail, there's different criteria unless there's a barrier in the schedule that prevents you from taking the course, so, but there's not a solid policy written out that parents can simply grab a hold of. It says that, yes, we have the discretion to take them, it's gonna be an accredited correspondence course, Virtual Virginia is the one right now that we recognize, because that does have an actual teacher, it's just now automated and it's accredited that way, that's the one the state asks us to do, so that is what we use for summer courses, and throughout the year, we have Virtual Virginia courses. So the parent was concerned that we'd look at that, and maybe the board wanted to weigh in on how we accept those, right now, the guidance department at the high school and the high school administration is looking at sample ones from different districts, and there's a wide range of how those transfer credits come in, it's, if it can fit in your schedule, we won't accept it, to, yes, please take all you can, it will impact, so there's different ways that different schools do it, so my thinking is, it probably needs a little bit of a work group with parents and students to hone in on an actual process for review.
That's a good idea, I, it makes some sense to me if people are trying to accelerate their programs, if they're trying to make room in their schedule for additional electives, maybe, banned, maybe, and if parents are willing, one of the caveats is the parent has to pay them 350 bucks or whatever it is for that course, but it would make sense, and not just whether it's a course that is available online and can be taken in the summer to free up a period of time to take another course, right? You know, I think there has to be a reason, or if you wanted to go from, you know, Algebra Trig to whatever, you just take one and just sort of then move on and accelerate to next year, you know?
That does come up with banned and potential governor's school applicants...
Oh, sure, yeah.
Because of the number of math and science, and Miss Pond recommending that we do chemistry ahead of the school.
I think the idea of putting a group together of guidance and administration and parents is the right way to go, and it's not something you have to do in the next two days.
No, no, it's something we were already planning on, it was good, it was timely, because we had just looked at the Fairfax County one last spring, because that was one we really liked the form and how they, so we were looking at several of them anyway, because this issue's gonna come up more and more now that the verified credits have lifted.
That's right.
You're gonna have a lot more opportunity, but the other side of things, you don't want it to create an instance of inequity among students who have those who can pay a whole bunch in the summer and accelerate and get their GPA, which is...
That's always true.
It's true, but you want to look at all of those things, those are just pieces to be aware of, and then, you know, do you want your ninth grader graduating, and, you know, there's all these pieces of it, so, you know, we have to look at it all as a group and come up with a...
You could put a cap.
Okay, and we can't tell them they can't take it, they can take whatever they want to take, it's just how the credit comes in, impacts GPA, classroom rates, transcripts, all of those things is up to the school.
But if, I mean, if someone took, let's take something simple, Algebra I, and wanted it, wanted it just to be on their transcript so they could go to geometry, I mean, we would do that kind of thing, probably.
Well, if it fits in their schedule, though, it depends, there's a lot of factors, and that's where guidance comes in with the academic career planning, what is your plan, what are we looking for, trying to make room in that schedule so you can meet it, and our goal is to meet it in our schedule that we have, so you don't have to be put in a hardship to pay over the summer to get it. So our goal is to try to make it as accommodating as possible, so we don't want to put people in that situation, but we can never tell a parent or a student, no, you can't take that class, you can take whatever you want, it's just, you know, it may or may not impact your GPA and those things.
But if we had a policy, it makes sense.
Clarify it a little more, yes.
Be a good idea.
I think so.
If I was a parent, before I gave out the 300, so dollars, I would like to know if my child is gonna get credit for it, otherwise, my child has to earn the 300 dollars to pay for it.
I mean, this is the pattern of education we're seeing today, so we should...
Used to the right way, it's a positive set, and it's positive for us, because it'll offer classes that we, because of our size, will be able to do.
Yeah, and we offer all of the array of Virginia, Virtual Virginia for free during those, during the school year, it's just the summer that costs money to do, so we want parents to be aware of that too, but all of those factors and how we can be more proactive and make sure that academic career plan is solid, so you know, and that we're trying to fit in whatever you want to do, and make sure you get those electives of interest, the career studies that we really want to do, we can already see the... We can already see the problems with the, the credit system and we're already talking about that because now with the verified credits lifting, you still have to come up with those 22, 23 for the different diplomas, but just being sure that we, we can fit those in the schedule to remember. That is the goal.
But putting, putting a study group together, I think is right.
Yeah, okay. We'd be very willing to do that when we report back as we go.
Great.
Winter conditioning.
I put that one on too.
You put that one too, so, so explain.
There, there's been a, there's been discussion. We had some discussion about winter track two or three years ago that we chose not to fund. And, and I don't know, Jimmy, what the numbers are, but I would assume that our fall sports and our spring sports have the most number of kids involved because our winter sports are limited, basketball, so forth, are limited in numbers per se. Volleyball, basketball, whatever. Basketball primarily, I guess, and wrestling. Wrestling's not limited in numbers, but the numbers are not all that great. So some people have talked about providing a winter conditioning club activity, something that is, that is supervised, not just an open gym, not just a, a weight room that's open from 3:00 to 6:00 or whatever the number is. But have something legitimate.
As a...
Coach, sponsor, somebody that knows something about fitness. And I, my first impression was to say, commit to be fit and go from there. From that perspective. So anyway, that's, that's where I am and I don't know where you are. And it makes sense to me.
And it's something we've been talking about too with Commit to Be Fit is reaching students and how we want to do that. We have the elective class at the high school now with nutrition and fitness, but those winter sports, not all of them play Euro ball or spring athlete and you want to keep your conditioning going or for the students who don't even play sports but still want to stay fit. Those are things we have been talking about, but something we'd like to, to look into as well. Commit to Be Fit, we'd like to do that. We're building capacity we didn't know we had with the grants and things, the programs coming out of that, but it's something we can look at for our students.
But it'd be something to look at. We've got till winter to deal with something like that.
So the only, the thing that popped out to me is supervised, right? So it's a position that currently I wouldn't think we'd plan.
No, but I'm sure we have a coach that's not been filled, a coaching position's not been filled. It could be a stipend position. If we chose to do it or if the school chose to do it.
And as we fire an athletic director, we'll put that on the radar as a building coordinator team?
Well, that could be one of the questions.
So it's plausible that something that...
How would you?
We can create the plan, then we'll try to execute if it's plausible.
Space will be your issue and here's why. You have two gyms, you're going to have six basketball teams, two each, Junior Panther, Junior Varsity and Varsity Boys and Girls. As soon as their practices are over, rec league comes in. You have a very vibrant and well, a lot of numbers in our youth basketball rec league. And then once games start, then you've got, you know, the, the gym here is essentially unavailable for practices once games start. You could theoretically have home games and basketball season, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday night if the schedule works out that way. It rarely does. But again, even though we just, like as you said, Mr. Grove, we have basketball, we have wrestling in the winter, but with six basketball teams, because we have our middle school sports program, that's going to be the issue. Not saying it's insurmountable, not saying it can't be figured out, but it's, it's, it's not as easy as it sounds.
I'm not saying it was easy. I just said, is it doable? I mean, we've got out, we've got, in our winter, you know, global warming, our winters are not as cold as they used to be. We could use a track.
Absolutely.
For, for doing the, the, a mile a day or two miles a day, you know, that kind of thing.
And the weight room.
Could use the weight room, could find a room to do yoga in.
And a to be fit room.
Yeah. There's, there's, there's lots of alternatives. We just have to think about how to get them done. But I think kids staying in shape between spring and, and whatever we think.
Fall, spring.
Uh, is an important thing. And it deals, it deals with the, the obesity problem that, that happens in the winter.
Somewhere between the A D, to be Nate, and our principal will figure out if it can fit. Great.
Well, there was another topic that really is related to what you're bringing up, Larry, that, that's been kicked around for elementary age kids. The idea of now that they have a rotation of six, you know, six different special activities. There's a lot of days where kids aren't having very much physical activity in the elementary school now. It would be just, I know Mr. Temple was open and he said that teachers are welcome. Just take 15 minutes and just go out and run for, for a time during, or at the end of math class or in between. And I just think that that beginning of fitness, it's that, that, that age range, especially like age 11 to 14, having the, the mental and physical benefits of a daily 15 minutes, like there's the daily mile during the UK is something you see all over the place. That could give them tools for, you know, Commit to Be Fit was trying to work on tools for how to recharge your brain. It's a brain break, but it's a more strenuous and aerobic kind of brain break. And I do think that leading in with elementary activities and whatever culture we continue to encourage is kinds of things. It's, it's what we're looking to for. It's not disconnected from elementary to high school. You know, I don't think we need to make a new policy, but just as a member of the school board, I'd love to see the kids taking 15 minutes to run more often or daily instead of weekly. We assess, there's only one daily example for that school.
15 minutes?
Yeah, just 15 minutes, one mile, you know, just running.
Yeah, you ought to be able to do a six-minute run anyway.
Yeah, well, yeah, when you're, when you're 112, maybe. I don't know.
It's the second one.
But yeah, I, I, I just think it's, it's something that's, we need to be supporting anyway. I think that's the right way.
Sounds like Commit to Be Fit is kind of infiltrating everybody. I love it. We're like, two more, two more, two more.
I hate to admit, I hate to admit this, but I sent you another little, now I can't remember what it was. I didn't write it down.
It's always next month.
Yes.
I listened to you.
There was a little heat there.
If I come up with a, I'll give it...
There's new business coming up, which will give you a chance to have it.
Yeah, right.
All right?
I got to find it.
And we're going to hear from you after new business, right?
I just said my new business.
No, what about your trip?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What about the trip?
Sure.
Two point three. Two point three is the annual convention. It's number 15. It's only the one day that you go down for the day.
Just temporary, the one day.
Well, I don't know what you would, you usually go longer, right?
Well, and this year, Commit to Be Fit is actually presenting at an conference. Our proposal that accepted. So we have a full breakout session at the conference.
Is that on the 15th?
I can't remember which day it was. It might have been the 15th.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have a few that are attending and speaking at dates that are starting to run together.
Which one was that?
And I don't have my planner with me at the moment.
Okay, so it'd be good to know.
Absolutely.
I didn't follow the...
15th, but I just remembered the year that we all went down and stayed and it was, I mean, we obviously, a lot of boards do that, but it's expensive by the time you go. So many rooms and meals and just that type of...
And there's the one professional development that you do over the year.
We do it on one day. It's a lot cheaper.
I would love that.
All right, initially though, we're going to plan on carpentering, leaving, parking lot before then. We're going down so a little bit speed on 15.
Same rooms.
Chris, are you coming? Are you going to stay long? Tell you all about it? He's going to check. 15th to November, so four or five. And we have to tell them by next month?
Yeah.
Next meeting. So make sure you know by the next meeting that you're going to plan to be there on Thursday.
It doesn't have the breakout session time this...
Not yet.
Okay.
Probably, it's probably not.
All right. We're now public comment. Is there anybody like to speak to the board? Now's the time to do it. Anyone? Clear enough? Moving on. Do we have an update on the logo or is it just too much work?
Oh, no, I have an update.
You actually...
I printed it out.
Going old school. Old school in paper.
In paper.
Oh, I like the gold.
I think the gold is really good.
The gold is cool.
Oh, that is so...
And in case you're wondering, I also made a reverse as well with the blue tree.
Oh, did you?
No, it was just in case you're curious.
Oh, definitely.
And then this was the reverse.
This is what I thought it would be.
I like it.
That's a lot to say.
I like it, yeah.
That was such a great idea.
It's got...
It does. It pops.
I love it that it's a recognizable...
You want to see it? Not in. Yeah, we'll give you a confident look, but you want to get it off the video. You'll see it in. All right.
Chris, you're rolling your eyes.
This is exciting. I think we should vote on this thing. Right? We have a motion to approve the new art, this logo branding. It's your motion? Mr. Oo, do you have a second?
Second.
You have a second, Mr. Oo? Got to be quick on the call. All right, discussion. Here's my discussion. Great job, Holly.
Thank you.
Paper.
Thank you. Great recommendation with the colors.
Yes. It's good. Teamwork is great work, yeah.
I saw that on a wall recently. Great. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, folks know. There he is. Great. Uh, new business.
I can't find one of those.
Ms. Bonham was going to share with us why she was absent last month.
Great, great. I was with Mr. Temple at Chesapeake Bay. We went on a trip, a teacher trip with, with teachers from surrounding counties, with our Solent Water Conservation District leader, Stephanie DiNacolo. And it was, I have to say, it was, I, 20 years ago, I worked there and led teacher trips and they were very full of content and, and meaty information. This was a more vacation-type trip than I thought we would have. We had time to, to talk and network with Heather Wick from Rat Flo Kane and so did our sixth grade science teacher, oh, Tammy, Tammy, her last name is Racer. Yes, Tammy Racer. So it was a perfect team because sixth grade SOL includes education about the Chesapeake Bay and water sanitation. And we had a good networking, a good session of figuring out how our local environmental organizations can offer some concrete things to our elementary school for, even for this year. And so we put out a survey, which I have a couple copies of it, and, you know, that it's, that Holly helped us to distribute. And we're going to see what needs the teachers have and we have about a dozen specific lesson ideas, local field trips, in-class visits that are, that can dovetail nicely with the curriculum and include some things that have done, happened up in the past. We had, we had volunteers from that group come and help spruce up the courtyard. The day of Maria trip, was it just yesterday? It was, it was only yesterday. And helped to pull weeds. And we're trying to figure out and had a nice conversation with, with Dr. Bolt as well about the possibilities of working together with a really enthusiastic community, organizations who... Yeah, I know. You're putting it in your nose, you said. So that's exciting. Yeah, so I felt like it was really productive. It was, it was a, and I just have to say, I really liked the people from Rappahannock, like listening to me. There were some other teachers that, I just loved the feel of our culture and our school and our group and meeting. There were, there, there was very, it was good to meet a lot of the other folks, but it just felt like our school culture was just comfortable. I think we felt that way. And it was awesome. There were so many crabs, so many oysters. It was, the Bay, you've probably read that the Bay program has been working over the last 20 years. It has. There's, there's so much more life there than there was 20 years ago when I worked there. So that was really encouraging to figure it out.
Thanks for the...
I can't remember.
Oh. You weren't listening?
I was listening. I was all about the Bay.
New business, Larry?
We, we had talked about the library. I believe in having someone in the library until the last bus leaves or until 4:00, 5:00 or whatever, what that time is.
This is the library.
School library so that kids could participate, go to the weight room, whatever they go do on homework in the library. And it's twofold. One is connectivity. So much is done online. The library, the public library has like four computers, six computers, unless it's a laptop. And as we do have a number of kids without, without connectivity. So being able to open the library maybe two days a week in the afternoons or something of that nature that we could fund some way or other or get headwaters to fund it some way or other.
When?
After school.
After school.
After school, you know, three to five.
Tuesday and Thursday, three to five type thing.
Something of that.
Bring that up at our next cabinet meeting to look at some of those logistics. And some of the things we're already doing. I know we have some library hours for tutoring and things like that, so maybe we can blend some. But also, we had talked about before too, some allowing community access that they need a little bit too, but...
Well, I'm not saying... That's a different ballgame.
But for students, yeah. So we'll bring it up at our next cabinet meeting.
I mean, you know, well, there's a, a family down the road where two kids are in sports and the third kid has nothing to, you know, there's...
Nowhere to go.
Nowhere to go. Could get on the bus and go to an empty house, but end up wanting to play sports, but they could go to the library and get the homework.
Then get picked up.
And they get picked up when the kids from sports get picked up.
So you're not talking about programming, you're just talking about having a...
Library hours.
Just supervised library hours. Which many, many schools do that. It's something we could look at.
Thanks. And you guys will take it with that. Thanks. All right, our next, is there anything else under new business? All right, I'm gun-shod. Next regularly scheduled school meeting is September the 11th at 6:30 PM. And at this time, we'll maintain a motion. We want a closed session, but don't dart out of the room because we're going to have a birthday celebration that's sitting right in front of me on the way out. So before we actually start any closed sessions, we'll take a little drink and eat some snacks.
Following our break, I moved at the board convening in a closed session for the following purposes. To discuss and consider the appointments of staff for classified professional coaching, substitute teaching positions, resignation of professional positions, classified positions, and discussions of superintendent goals and evaluations pursuant to code, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
A second.
A second from Ms. Bonham. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So what are we in close session? So we'll take a short recess and, so this is in, this is in celebrations of Ms. Bonham's birthday. And it's, you know, it's not cake.
Yeah.
Because...
The whole side of the street.
She never takes cake at your...
She never. It's a fruit.